Is your husband, I understand.
Yeah, he doesn't either.
Good morning. It's Tuesday, September 20th. It's actually the last meeting of the summer for us. So please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen.
All right. We've got minutes for September 13th as well as September 14th.
I will make a motion to approve the September 13th and 14th minutes.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion or changes? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right, now open to public comment regarding pending resolutions. Anyone? If not, okay, we do have a commendation here. This commending Dan Hostetler for his 31 years of service with Medina County. Whereas it has come to the attention of the Board of County Commissioners that Dan Hostetler is retiring from Medina County Convention and Visitor Bureau on October 7th, 2022. And whereas Dan was hired on April 1st, 1991, as the first executive director of Medina County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and whereas Dan embraced the challenge of marketing Medina Counties to support the business community by launching the organization, growing it to become what it is today, and winning several awards, including the George Hoy Excellence in Tourism Award, the American Bus Association Destination Marketing Award, and the prestigious Ohio Travel Association Paul Sherlock Award. And whereas Dan's attitude and willingness to work with others has brought the Medina County Convention and Visitors Bureau to the attention of the region, the state, and national tourism markets and general public. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor Dan for his commitment and diligent work during his career as the Director of the Medina County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, that Dan Hostetler be and is hereby commended for his 31 years of service with the Medina County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Be it further resolved that the Board wishes to take this opportunity to offer best wishes to Dan for his retirement.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Move to second. Any comments?
Thank you, Dan, for your service.
Thank you.
It's been appreciated and it's always nice to see the Conventioners Bureau on the corner down there in downtown Medina. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. And Dan, if you could please come forward. I'd like to present this to you. Arthur, you've got an opportunity to say a few words.
You're welcome.
Did you get it already? Because I need him to look this way.
I just want to say thank you to all. It's been a privilege and an honor to work for the county, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Resolutions. We do have the County Engineers Office. Dan Becker.
Wish this family was retiring. Oh, well. Congratulations. Happy National Voter Registration Day. Hopefully you guys are registered.
Yeah.
I've got four resolutions for consideration today. The first resolution is authorizing change order number one for the 2021 Medina County chip ceiling bid. The second resolution is authorizing change number one final for the 2022 Medina County chip ceiling bid. The third resolution is authorizing the annual assessment for the Windfall Estates Phase Two subdivision. And the fourth resolution is approving the final plat for the Windfall Estates subdivision Phase Two. And then our weekly comments.
I'll make a motion to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Sanitary Engineer, Jeremy Cinco.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into agreement with Answer Advisory for professional design services to review and update the sanitary engineer's standard specification book. And the second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter an agreement with HDR Engineering for professional design services to provide an assessment of tuberages.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Hallie Muirin, our Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Hallie.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one in maintenance, one at office for older adults, one promotion in sanitary, a transfer between agencies to the building department, nine rate increases, seven in sanitary, two at office for older adults, a date correction in maintenance, a leave of absence in animal shelter, a return from leave in transit, and a resignation in sanitary.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Shannon Reiner, Transit Director.
Good morning. I have one resolution for consideration. I'm going to hand you something here to look at. These are vehicle diagrams of, and I'll read the resolution, give you a reference of what I'm talking about here. Approving the purchase of three replacement transit vehicles with 2023 Federal Transit Administration Urban Grant Form of Funding. These are vehicles that became available with our current vendor that are available in the next couple of months. This will really help us out with three, replacing three of our out-of-use-for-life vehicles. Looking at these vehicles, you can see they're a little different, but they are still an eight-seat capacity with three mobility devices. This leads into some of our discussion with our strategic planning. And because we were able to be, have some cooperation with our current vendor, these became quickly available. So we're acting quickly with our Planning Commission, NOACA, and the state. I've spoken with both of those, and these vehicles can be ours pretty quick.
I do like that we're getting some smaller vehicles.
And responding to your.
Yeah. How does this compare in size with the?
It's about the size of the purchased ones. The eight and two we just purchased, it's a van, it's a transit.
Right.
A Ford Transit, they call it, with a rear wheelchair facing. Helps us out in some areas. We're going to do a lot more training with them because it'll be a little different than the side.
Right, the loading in, yeah.
But great vehicle. They have those at Akron Metro and at Delaware that we visited. So it's a good addition to our team. It's a welcome addition to some replacements, and it lines up with our strategic planning efforts that we're making to, this may be something we can fully utilize in the future. So it's a good pilot as well.
All right.
So are these gas or diesel?
Gas.
Gas.
It does help us, obviously, this, we're working with the FTA to do an 80/20 purchase of $240,000. The local match would be $48,000. That really helps us out with some major repairs that we would have had to do on the three replacements. This more than benefits cost-effectively, too.
Okay, very good.
Shannon, how do they access it from a handicap standpoint? Is it through the side door?
Yeah, there's a bus door, a physical bus door, and then the rear is a wheelchair lift.
Oh, so it's actually through the rear of the vehicle?
Exactly, exactly. It's tried and true, proven in Akron.
So basically, it's a ramped rear entrance?
It's a full lift.
That's a full lift, actually?
It's a full lift in the back, yep.
Okay, just folds down. Okay, got it. Ah. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I think we already did, didn't we?
Oh, we already did.
No, we didn't?
No, we didn't. No, we didn't.
I got one.
Second, okay, move to second. No, he just throws the picture. Any questions, further comments? I'm just glad we're able to get them.
Yeah.
Especially what's going on in manufacturing of vehicles, and we've just been noticed about some sheriff's vehicles.
Yeah.
Got delayed.
Got delayed. So this is great. Good.
They became available when we jumped on it.
Yeah.
Good work.
Yep, prepared. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Shannon, thank you for the strategic planning session last week.
Yes.
It was very, very good, very interesting how they're approaching this.
I was very happy with the activities we had and the interactiveness of it. I'm excited to see what the future brings.
Yes, indeed.
Oh, yeah, great.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks. All right. Scott Miller, County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have nine resolutions for you today. The first two resolutions are amending the appropriations. This is being done through either the increase of those appropriations or transfer of appropriations. The third resolution is authorizing expenditure adjustments in various funds. The fourth resolution is authorizing cash transfer in various funds. This is actually transferring, there were, the Transit Operating Grant Fund, last year's was being used this year. So this is actually making that correction to move that activity to the current fund. The fifth resolution is authorizing county auditor to transfer funds in various county departments. This is to cover the cost of the gasoline used between the period of July 1st and August 31st. The sixth resolution is creating a Board of Elections August Primary Grant Fund. The total is $12,447. Seventh resolution is allowing an expense for the county engineer. The eighth resolution is allowing expenses for county officials. This is the commissioners, the planning department, and job and family services. And the final resolution is authorizing issuance upon the Treasury and settlement of such list of claims in the amount of $226,012.25.
Make a motion to approve the nine resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Next, Department Updates. Chief Building Official, Richard Nelson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
August was a big month for us, really big month. Value of construction compared to last August is up 81%. So, yeah, it was a very busy month. New homes come up a little bit. The value of new homes starts for August, brought the year-to-date up to $379,000 average. Year-to-date, we've done 298 new home permits, new home starts. So this is just through August, so I suspect we'll be approaching 400 by the year end for new home starts. Second page, again, since August was so big, we had big receipts for August. 67% over last August, which the third page brings our year-to-date receipts up also, up 34% over last year at this time. Of course, our receipts and our permits go hand in hand when they're directly proportional, you know? So the quantity of permits and the size of the buildings is what drives all that. So, yeah, we've been quite busy, going, jumping way back to the very last page that lists the commercial projects, that list hardly ever gets into the 22 or 23 projects. And those were all issued in August. So, yeah, it was a big month and a big year. Other things, our new building inspector is doing real fine. He started two weeks ago and is doing real good. And yes, we have a new clerk starting on Monday, so that'll be helpful, badly needed. Our review times, commercial review times slipped out to about 25 days, which is not as good as they were, but not real awful. And residential review times remain real good at three to five days. The only other thing happening is our five-year cycle of doing the ISO Building Department grading system is up again. So we have to do that before November 1st, create that report, fill out their survey. That, they initially had wanted that here in September, but we have too much going on, so we moved it off to November 1st. It'll help us to get that report completed in a good manner. And that's all I have.
I would note that.
Sounds like you've been busy.
We have been very busy.
Note, seven of those of the commercial, though, were actually related to the Hinckley Senior Housing.
True, very true.
So, but it has a category and a lot of activity there.
It's a big complex with several multi-unit buildings.
Yeah.
And, you know, so that is true.
Yeah, okay.
Drove it up a lot.
Yep. All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bethany Tittler, Medina County Economic Development Corporation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Through the first three quarters of 2022, we've seen a record level of economic development activity in Medina County. There are 132 companies and organizations which have altogether made $453.5 million in new capital investments, which represents commitments to create nearly 1,300 new jobs. And just to maybe put some flesh around capital investment, what Richard reports is new construction permits. When we define capital investment, we look at not just new construction, but also the purchase of land, investment in a building, as well as machinery and equipment. So we total all of that up. And that represents, as I said, a new record of capital investments that we've seen in Medina County. The next highest record occurred in 2018, which had $330 million in capital investment, but there was one company alone responsible for 47% of that total. This year, investments are being made by a much larger diversity of businesses. We've seen a particular emphasis this year on warehousing and logistics operations. Also, so far this year, we've met with 160 companies to understand their business needs and discuss opportunities for growth, as well as understand the challenges that they're facing. Besides inflation and supply chain, which we hear about all the time, workforce remains an important concern. The latest unemployment rate for Medina County is 4.1% as of July. We should have August numbers fairly soon. That 4.1 is the same as last August. Over the past year, it has dipped as low as 2.7% in November and as high as 5.4% in February. And 5.4% is not high. I mean, when I was in grad school, 5% was full employment. So we've had some kind of a long-term workforce issue. So when the rates are released for this August, we're going to see if they'll follow last year's trends, you know, sort of, you know, more people being hired and then, you know, laid off after the Christmas holidays. Or if we actually do have more people coming into the workforce, that will be reflected in a higher unemployment rate. So that's not bad news if the unemployment rate goes up a little bit. Based on what we've been hearing from companies, it seems like there have been more job seekers in the market over the past few months. I think people are being impacted by inflation and the costs of not working. At our Economic Development Corporation member meeting last week, we hosted Christine Marshall from Summit Medina Workforce Development Board. She shared the details of a working-age adult survey that was conducted in Medina, Summit, and Portage Counties this spring. It's a very statistically significant study, so I think the findings are relevant. And I understand that the commissioners are working on setting up a meeting to hear those results as well. So I won't repeat all of her findings, but I did ask at our member meeting for her to include some information that's not in her standard report. She provided insights into what benefits would be most likely to influence job seekers who are considering a particular employer. And what they heard was having a flexible schedule and the ability to work remotely were consistently high factors across generations. Unlimited paid time off is now a strong consideration for 20 to 30% of job seekers. Yes, this is a thing. I mean, I, yes. One other conclusion of the regional survey, which included this three-county working-age adult survey, was that employers may be able to draw missing workers back into the labor force by understanding their reasons for not working, such as there've been concerns with toxic workplaces and discrimination, a lack of training, or just difficulty finding interested employers because of their backgrounds. So I think that there's some good lessons there for companies that need workers. As you know, and as we've talked about many times before, our office has initiated some creative solutions to workforce challenges, including events with local schools to facilitate interaction between high school students and businesses. So far this fall and then throughout the spring, we've scheduled expos for engineering and healthcare careers at both Brunswick and Medina High Schools. We have a career senior exploration event with Cloverleaf. We have career fairs at Buckeye and Black River High Schools and the Medina County Career Center, as well as soft skills classes at Wadsworth. We are looking for a good number of business volunteers to either staff a table at an expo or a career fair or present directly to students in the classroom about career paths. So those events begin September 29th and are scheduled through next March. We have a link to register for any of those events at medinacounty.org and just look at the News and Events page. Also this fall, our office will be managing a $500,000 grant to the Medina County Port Authority, which was approved by the Ohio Department of Development last month for the state's building demolition grant program. This was the program that the county commissioners appointed the port authority for, finally got that finished, although I'm still waiting on their signature for the final agreement. So it has been a very long process. But those, that grant will fund five projects from four different development partners, both public and private. They're investing those proceeds in the construction of brand-new facilities, ranging from retail and commercial, mixed use, as well as warehouse and logistics. We're also still waiting to hear back on another $600,000 grant application that we made to the Brownfields Revitalization Program. Couple of events, just to bring to your attention, our Made in Medina County program. This summer, we held two successful roadshow events in our industrial areas, including Brunswick and Valley City. We had 75 people in attendance who learned more about our county's manufacturing base and gained, I think, a true appreciation for skilled trades. Our next big event is Made in Medina County Day on Friday, October 7th. Plant tours begin at 8:00 AM and run through 3:00 PM, and you can sign up for a tour at madeinmedinacounty.com. And there are still tours available. I think we had 50 time slots altogether, so they're all throughout the day. After the tours, please join us for a networking mixer and celebration at the Foundry Social in Medina starting at 3:30 PM. On October 20th, we're hosting an 8:30 AM workshop on new incentives for energy efficiency incentives, investment for, I'm sorry, incentives for energy efficiency investments. Community Energy Advisors is working with us on that. That's actually right here in the County Administration Building, but a virtual option is also available. And then on November 10th, we have another workshop with the Minority Business Assistance Center on how businesses can grow their revenues by becoming a certified minority business. And our signature event for the fall is the Medina County Business Awards. Our judges are meeting later today to select the top candidates, top finalists in each category for the 2022 event, which will take place on Tuesday, October 25th, in Westfield Center. As always, the winners are closely guarded secret, so you have to come the night of the event to see who our winners are. That invitation went out yesterday, so hopefully you received it. Please register soon. And because it's sponsored by Westfield Bank, there's no charge to our attendees, but space is limited, so please join us.
Thank you, Bethany.
Yeah, thank you. I would note that Christine Marshall, in that survey, especially with the youngest generation, I think their number two interest was actually mental health, mental health services from their employers. So that's, yeah, it was kind of interesting. And I think we're scheduled next week, right, Rhonda, to meet with Christine?
Good. Yeah, I think you'll find it very interesting.
Oh, yeah, great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Bethany.
All right. EMA, we have Matt Sturgeon.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Matt Sturgeon. I'm from Medina County EMA. I'm going to report on our volunteer program. Medina County EMA has two volunteer programs. We have one that's called the CERT Team that stands for Community Emergency Response Team. The second one is called the Communications Unit. And, well, that's obvious what it stands for. The emphasis of our CERT Team is on disaster response skills and resiliency. And then the emphasis of our communications unit is on communications and technology. And then in the real world, they both work together hand in hand. So if we have an activation, we're happy to get our communications unit people, and we're happy to get our CERT Team people working together. The CERT Team, they are trained in basic CERT training. We emphasize team organization with them. And the reason for that is because if an incident commander requests our CERT Team, we want him to know that it's not going to be a management burden. We want them to travel as light on their feet as possible. So he calls them. We have one person who manages our team as a team leader and report to whoever is the person that activated our team. They're available to any incident commander in any jurisdiction. So if there's a fire and the incident commander has a need for just reliable help, doesn't need any specialized emergency response training, our volunteers are happy to do that. And then in addition to that, our communications guys get very specialized, and they're also happy to help out with that. Presently, on our roster, we have 17 CERT volunteers who are actively volunteering and contributing their time. We have 20 COGS unit volunteers, communications unit volunteers. Our volunteers are vetted and they're trained. So if a local jurisdiction requests our volunteers, they know that they're going to, you know, be a good crew that shows up. Some of the recent missions that they've done, so this is just this summer, they were activated for the Medina County Fair to help out with directing people. That's one of the things that they're good at. And you guys know how valuable that can be, just to have a bunch of people to give direction. They helped out with the Medina City Independence Day Fair. That's a very popular detail, and so is the Christmas Light Walk. That's a popular detail as well. They secure the perimeter when they shoot the fireworks. They did the Valley City Independence Day fireworks, Tunnel to Towers 5K. They helped direct that. They helped with Feeding Medina County. When Feeding Medina County moved their operation to an outside operation, our CERT Team was able to go in quickly. And they took charge of the logistics of that operation. So the National Guard helped direct the traffic in the parking lot. And then our CERT Team folks are the ones that actually direct the cars into the area where they load them, and they stop the cars, and then they load it up. That's their contribution to that operation. Yeah, and they do that actively. There's a group that shows up to Feeding Medina County every month still. They helped out with all the vaccine clinics, the same, they directed people. And we tried to, they put in so many hours, we tried to recognize them. And we very quickly found out that their purpose was not for recognition. It wasn't. They were there for service, and they really, they didn't want their picture taken. They didn't want their name posted online. And we were happy to respect that. And then another thing that they do is they did Volunteer Reception Center and Training. Our Health Department, they have a medical reserve corps, that's their volunteers. They asked our volunteers to come and put on a training for theirs, and we were very happy to do that. We have operations called Volunteer Reception Center. And most simply, the Volunteer Reception Center is a way that you can receive a whole crowd of people who have shown up to help for something, and you can see how that would be important in a disaster. It's a huge management challenge, and it can be a problem if you're not ready for it. So our volunteers are the folks that have the capability to handle that and bring some order to that situation if it were to occur. They've also recently done SkyWarn training through the National Weather Service. They've had, the mental health training is very popular. Any kind of training that we can do that has to do with mental health is extremely popular with our volunteers. And it seems practical, too, because it seems like there's a high likelihood that they would be dealing with individuals that could be in a crisis. So it seems appropriate. The course that they took was called Assisting Individuals in Crisis. We're partnering with Lafayette Township Fire Department. They invited us to come. They're going to do a Stop the Bleed training for us. And the secondary benefit of working with Lafayette Fire Department, and I told this chief wind clerk, is that if he ever activates our volunteers, we already have a working relationship. So that's a good, good thing. And then they're also working with our water rescue team. Communications Unit Specialists are volunteering to help out with our water rescue team. And the reason for, so not just firefighters are deploying for that. The reason why they want our communications people is because a water rescue can become a complex incident very quickly. And we work with multiple different partners on that, and it's really important that we have good communications at work. So we activate our communications unit people for that. And also, we did CPR first-day training recently, yeah. If you guys want to learn more about our volunteer teams, I brought. If you guys want to learn more about our volunteer teams, I brought some pamphlets. Is it okay if I?
Sure.
Okay, I have, I have three, one, two, three.
Give me four.
One for the record.
Yep.
And if you guys would like to have one, I'd be happy to give you one. Additionally, we have our application and our handbook posted on www.madinacountiema.org. And, and also my contact information is on there as well.
So Matt, if somebody's interested in becoming a CRT, CERT or the comm person volunteer, they contact you?
Yes. Yep, go to our website. They can look at the handbook. There's photographs of some of our deployments on there. And I, I think the handbook would give a pretty good description of the rules that we follow and how we deploy.
Is there any particular skill sets that you're looking for?
You know, that's a, that's a very good question. That's, that's a question that we get asked quite a bit. And by nature of our business, we can really, we, we don't know what we're going to need at any given time. So for us to have a real diverse skill set on our team is a benefit. We have people who are apt to do administrative work, and we have people who are apt to go out and do more labor-intensive work and anything in between. We're real happy to have them. Another thing that we did is on our, on our application, we, we asked if people knew any foreign languages. We thought that could come in handy. And we, we had our current volunteers fill out the application so that we could assess the skills that we didn't know about. And we were amazed. They know all these different foreign languages that we can draw on if we ever needed it, I suppose.
Excellent.
Yeah, absolutely anybody, we have a place for them.
What sort of training requirements do you have?
For the CERT team, there's the CERT basic training is a 30-hour training that we deliver. We're certified to deliver it through the state of Ohio. We have four instructors. And then beyond the basic, the basic CERT training is your disaster response skills. And then beyond that, we're training the Volunteer Reception Center capability is a whole other process that we teach our people. And all, you know, all the other trainings that I listed, like the Stop the Bleed and assisting individuals in crisis, those are all optional, but they're extremely popular. And then our, most recently, within the past few years, we resolved that, we were having, we had a monthly meeting, we resolved that it would be most constructive if we changed it from an organizational meeting to a training meeting. And, and we meet separately now, our team leaders meet separately for an organizational meeting. So we have one strong training meeting once a month that's, that's engaging and good for enthusiasm.
All right.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Next, open to public comment. Anyone here? Yep, please come forward. If you could name an address for the record, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity. Jim Bellick, 3414 Hamlin Road, Madina Township. I'm not sure after last week if anyone here spoke to Mr. Kovak in regards to the false promises and shortfall in revenues from Nexus Pipeline and their attempts to reneg on those promises. And promises that were for the counties, the school districts on significant tax revenues that had been assured in return for permission to build the pipeline. According to Mr. Kovak, I did speak with him, once Lorraine County appealed, that stopped the process entirely. So you, you didn't have to do anything in regards to an appeal process nor himself. So it only took one county. So right now, it is, is back in the state's hands. It is on hold, and we're waiting to see what the position will be of the state's Ohio Department of Taxation. So, so what can you do? What does this all mean for your constituents and the pipeline company? And that some or all of you approved of for the county? Let's take one example, Cloverleaf School Districts. And this is according to a Channel 5 News report. Original revenue promises to Cloverleaf were, the shortfall on that so far has been $3 million per year, because they've only been paying at 40% of the original promise. Then there was an, so over, over five years, that's a $15 million shortfall to your school districts, to our children, and to Cloverleaf in particular. Even at the settlement level, which was 69%, you're still $1.5 million shortfall or $7.5 million over the, just the five-year time period. Very, very, very significant. So here's your opportunity. Stand up for your residents, stand up for the kids, stand up for the schools, overcome any possible Ohio oil and gas election contributions you may all have received. Throw your weight as commissioners with strong opinions to the state and stand up again for the kids, stand up for the school districts, and against Nexus. Mr. Hambley, it's an opportunity for you to capitalize on your prior state resume and all your contacts that you had made in your stint down in Columbus. It's an opportunity to clear off that House Bill 6 yes vote from your slate and replace it with a solid endorsement for your voters. Stand up to Nexus Pipeline, stand for Madina County, stand for the Cloverleaf School Districts and all the school districts in the county. Hold their feet to the fire, to their promises. It's significant dollars. They made a promise, try to hold their feet to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I do, I know you'd come last week to raise the issue. I'll just point, there was a, in 2020, March of 2020, there was a caucus, there was a meeting of a number of us, General Assembly, the House Representatives, as well as several members of the Senate, met with Jeff McLean, McCain, who's the, he's the Department of Taxation Director, and actually over this very issue. I, I likewise have been personally, as well as as part of public record, very critical of the industry for overpromising the taxes they were going to pay. And then, and then the insult they had when they, when they basically fought the appraisals. The Department of Taxation fought very hard. They brought in and they assured us they were going to bring a number of, of experts to bear, and they did. They were able to secure, I think, considerable more, bit more money in terms of the, the tax liabilities that Nexus and other pipeline builders were to pay. The 69% settlement was as a result of Department of Taxation pushing very hard, as well as the help of the General Assembly. Frankly, it was up to me, any, and I know what happens with the pipeline companies, they end up hiring a third party to make, if you will, estimations of what their tax liability are. And I truly believe in a public setting that when these, when these companies are going and getting through the permitting process, they ought to be required to file what their anticipated tax liability as, as part of the public record, and that they would then be, at least for the first number of years, held accountable for that. So I do join with the, the state. I understood the nature of reaching a settlement, but likewise, I also know with the Lorraine County weighing in, as I understand, now it will be in the hands of the court to determine whether that was an appropriate settlement or not. The challenge is going to be going, and we have to realize that there's a lot of money behind this, that's going to be bringing in a load of experts. And so at this point, it is going to be somewhat of a gamble for the state, whether they even receive that 69%, especially when it's, depending on the venue. As I say, it's good to know the law better than to know the judge. And in this case, I guess we'll have to see what the courts do with, with those appeals. And I likewise am outraged that the companies overpromised and have not been held accountable for the amount of money that they were going to give to the communities or have to pay to the communities for their tax liability. And they, and I absolutely agree. Unfortunately, in March 2020, you may recall, we, we had a number of issues in what's called COVID. It reduced our ability to meet in caucus and meet together to actually significantly tackle that issue. And I think that I would love to see that in the, in the future, the General Assembly addresses more systematically. As I said, whenever they start filing, especially for state permits, even though this is a federal permit for that project, they still have required some state permits that they would then be required to at least, like the, for the pumping station and so forth, that they would, compression station, they would have to at least, when it came to that particular asset, to demonstrate that this is what their, the value is going to be, this is what the anticipated tax value, and that they would have to live within those, those promises. But at this point, it's out of our venue, and I guess we'll just monitor it. And I know the association, the County Commissioners Association of Ohio likewise feels very strongly that these companies did not live up to their promises and that they ought to be pursued. Although I still have, I'd have to admit that a 69% settlement level was a whole lot better than what the industry was first pushing. So it's, but it's matter right now, it's of the courts. And I guess that we'll have to monitor and see what happens with that.
And Steve, I will, I'll, I'll talk with the superintendent of Cloverleaf.
Yeah.
I know that they have been actively involved in the litigation because they are one of the largest school districts impacted by the reduction. And, and, you know, they have, in our building, a new high school, and we're relying on those funds to, to support the debt service for.
Agreed.
So I'll, I'll talk with Dr. Cabillas again and see where they're at. You know, my understanding was that the, the settlement, that it was all agreed upon. I was not aware that Lorraine was challenging it. So I'll, I'll, I'll check with him anyhow and report back.
Thank you.
As well. All right.
Thank you so much for taking a look at it. Again, it's, it's so relevant for all the school districts, but particularly Cloverleaf. And I don't, I don't want to say we told you so, but we told you so back in 2015 or 16, when we came in repeatedly and said you cannot trust these pipeline companies. They had demonstrated it time and again, whether it be administratively in this, in this sense, or operationally, when they had bells and whistles and alarm bells going off and a big spill in Michigan, and they ignored them through the weekend, polluting it entirely. They can't, they couldn't be trusted. You can't trust, you know, I know Ohio Oil and Gas, they were behind all of this, including the, the House and the Senate in Columbus, but here we are. So I appreciate any follow-up and push you can put in at this point.
All right.
Even 70%, $7.5 million over five years is human. Thank you again for your time.
All right.
Yeah, I think it's also important to note, though, that this was a federal project and was permitted by the FERC in.
It went through.
I, I.
Madison Park District.
I understand where it went through.
And it required county endorsement.
It did not necessarily require county endorsement, but it, it was permitted. I agree with you that, that there was perhaps an overpromise, and, you know, to the degree that, that I think the affected entities can support valuations that, that are higher than what Nexus has proposed, they should be pursued.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right. Anybody else public comment? Hearing none? Okay, discussion session. Scott, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I want to give you a couple of updates. First of all, the courthouse continues to move forward. Just so you know, as of yesterday, contingencies, our contingency is currently at about $325,000. The contractor contingency is about $200,000, and Gilbane's contingency is about $500,000. Any monies that are not used in those contingencies come back to us. So we are doing very well. Gilbane has said they've never done a job where they've not gone through all the contingencies. So, and we still have over $1 million of contingencies left, and we're entering into the, we're finalizing the first phase, and we'll be moving into the second phase.
Well, which means the 1841 courthouse is where we could likely use some of those contingencies.
Yes, and we will use some of those contingencies.
But the total cost still would still be under.
Under the 29 million that we.
Right. Thank you.
Let's just hope that the contractor performs better than the Browns do.
You actually expected the Browns to perform?
Well, you know, at the last minute.
I know, yeah, I know.
Things happen as we saw yesterday.
It looks wonderful, though.
So it does look good. It is, it's going along really well.
All right, all right.
There are two areas of some, some concern. There is a, now a cement shortage. Fortunately, we have poured a significant portion of the cement in the courthouse. There is the hardscapes on the south side of the courthouse that they will be pouring, I think maybe, well, this week, they'll be pouring some of it. So we still have some to go. I don't believe, and Gilbane doesn't believe that it'll be an issue, but that could raise its ugly head and possibly delay things. Also, technology, the switches, I think I've spoken to all three of you about switches. We think we have a workaround where we'll be able to get some switches in on the 18th of October. They're not the final switches that we'll need, but they'll be at least enough to get us through probably several years.
Yeah, can I make one point?
Yeah.
About concrete. We were at the highway engineers last week, and Mr. Conrad mentioned that the highway engineers even have propagating concrete for roadways. So it is a significant problem. And, you know, down at the corner of Lake Road and 224, where they're building the 450,000 square foot warehouse, they're actually pouring those wall sections on site and making them on site, and then they have a crane lift them up and put them in place. Just those alone, and the amount of concrete that went into the floor was enormous. I mean, it has to be sucking up a lot of the available concrete capacity in the county.
Yeah, the building is amazing, by the way. I can't believe how big it is.
Yeah.
Monday, they're going to start connecting the connector with the 1841 courthouse. So that's going to be second shift work. So I know that we've contacted the city, the city will be contacting the residents that live close to the courthouse, that from 3:00 p.m. to, you know, 9:00, 10:00 p.m. at night, maybe even 11:00, there could be some noise. I am also, we're looking at the current furniture in the courthouse, trying to figure out the best way to dispose of it. I will be calling a, several auctioneers, seeing if anyone would be interested in taking that on next summer and auctioning that off. So we are moving forward. Also, just an update, 4046 Madina Road, I've been meeting with OSU Extension Office, working with Kyle White. There will be another tour tomorrow to try and determine the best way to utilize that facility for OSU Extension Office. As you know, they're one of the remaining, one of the two remaining offices in the professional building. Once we get OSU Extension out, mediation out, we'll be able to auction that building off. Budgets, county budgets are due either this Friday or next. I know I've, there are several departments that have not presented before. I've been meeting with them. I know I met with EMA last week to go over their budget and their presentation. We'll be meeting with, with several others. You did bring up the sheriff vehicles. I know that we had ordered, I believe, eight. One of those, we've been told, will not be built, is not available. We are hoping that the other seven will not be canceled. It is possible. I know that even, you know, we've, we've been leasing vehicles to Enterprise for several years, and there have been contracts in place where public subdivisions have ordered vehicles. They've been waiting for eight months, and the manufacturers have come back and said, we're not building them. So I'm hoping we get those vehicles, and other sheriffs fleet is in need of those. The other, other item that I have is, I know that Richard has something that he wants to discuss as far as fees. He's, the, he mentioned it several weeks ago about the large warehouses that are being built. I mean, I think the one in, in Westfield is 400,000, 450,000 square feet. So, Richard, you want to come on up and talk about that?
Yeah, Richard, come on up. That's a good segue.
Thanks, guys.
You emailed us a proposal involving the, the large-scale building permits?
Yes, yes. So included with that, there were some corrections, a typo that, when the last go-around that we did last spring, that you may have seen, I inadvertently left out occupancy type mercantile on our review schedule. We had a typo on the number, a, an eight was. We had a typo on the number, an eight was misread and put down as a two, so that's correction. And we added buildings that are over 200,000 square feet and above review fee costs for those two. I had previously just left it in at 200,000, but now all of a sudden, since we have 450 and 500,000-foot buildings, that changes things. So, and I don't know if you had enough time to take a look at this and agree that we should advertise before we put it on resolution.
Yeah, and then there was a schedule on the back, if I recall, Richard, where there were discounts for.
Correct.
Discounts for.
Fees on the larger buildings.
Right.
Correct. Buildings that are 100,000 to 200,000, a 10% reduction, 200,000 to 300,000, a 15%, 300,000 to 400,000, a 20% reduction, 400,000 to 500,000 square foot, a 25%, 500,000 and above, a 30%.
So, and those would be deductions to our fees, but if we still had to send them off a plan review, they'd still pay the actual cost of the plan review, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. That's separate and paid upfront.
Right.
And then, once they get a permit for these larger buildings, then that reduction would be applied to them.
Well, that represents a commensurate reduction in our time and effort on it, correct?
Correct.
And that's why we're reducing it.
Correct.
And so, because it really, just because they increase that certain component, doesn't mean that we have that much more activity or.
Correct.
Yeah.
We have more, but because of those, it's essentially a balloon that's.
Right.
Just filled up more, largely our warehouses or often warehouses.
Right.
Type structures, so we enjoy economy of scale, and we're just trying to pass along.
So we would need to do, how many public hearings for this?
I believe three.
Three, okay. I'm fine with advertising and moving forward with scheduling the public hearings as soon as possible.
Me, too.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
So, Richard, do you want these to be effective as soon as possible or effective?
Next year?
First of the year?
No, as soon as possible.
As soon as possible, okay.
Those big warehouses coming in first as well.
Oh, that's right, yes, okay.
They're already calling.
I understand they have approved site plan as of last night.
It is good counsel.
Good counsel still, okay.
It's good recommend.
Okay, all right. We'll start as soon as possible, I guess, all right. Your mic is not on.
Thanks, Miles.
Thanks, Miles. All right, Jeremy, you have anything for us?
Yeah, got two things for you today. First, City of Medina, I guess it'd be a week from yesterday, ended up passing the sewer agreement. So we'll work with, on a resolution with my clients, just to get that in the next couple of weeks here, so we can go authorize to get signatures on that. So that's a good thing to get that done early enough in the process, and we're not scrambling at the end of the year for that. And then the second, to kind of piggyback off the vehicles, we got authorization to purchase a pickup truck. Well, when we went to order it, Ford said, no way. So they're not going to honor that. So we did find another vehicle on Sourcewell, same type of truck. So I'll have resolution hopefully next week to rescind the authorization to purchase that truck and then to authorize purchase of through Sourcewell, so.
All right, very good.
This is our vehicle problem these days, isn't it?
And then, Jeremy, you wanted to report that you put four additional bins.
Oh, we got, yeah, we got.
Four additional bins at the transfer station at Wadsworth.
Correct. We got another two bins put in, I think, last week, so that brings a total of four additional bins.
But we're maxed out there now.
I think, I don't know if there's much room to put elsewhere, so.
Okay, and they're continuing to monitor it as for how often?
I haven't heard much from the city.
I, I'm hoping that the four, I mean, four bins are significant, so I'm hoping that, you know.
It'll help.
It'll help.
It'll help offset that, okay.
Yeah.
Very good, so, all right. Super. All right, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Steven, anything?
No.
Holly?
No.
All right. Let's see, Bethany further, anything more? All right. Bill?
We had a 911 planning meeting scheduled for this afternoon. We canceled it. The prosecutor's office is working on the agreement to modify the plan to redirect the towers around the county to the local PSAPs. And so anyhow, we'll pick up next week or next month on the meeting.
All right, very good. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Colleen?
Nothing.
Okay. I don't have anything, and we do not have requests for executive session, so I guess.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick, yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. That'll do it for today. Thank you very much. Everybody have a good week. Enjoy the sunshine while we have it.